Communications, I don't think we have any zoning representative? Has anybody attended zoning meetings since?
I think we, Janet did send out your.
Yes.
As scheduled.
Mm-hmm.
Wherever we are at with that.
Right, you do.
Maybe I think we made Tom who's not here tonight.
Okay, so everyone, everyone should have received that in the, it said even email with the updated list with a new additions to the.
It was, uh. September 4th. Number 4. Was it Brian, did you go?
I didn't go last week.
Okay.
No, I don't think I was.
We might have updated schedule.
Was it my turn?
It was, but I think.
We got an updated schedule.
Yeah, you got it after the fact.
Okay.
Okay. I guess this announces something, I guess.
I was gonna sit with the.
Oh, no problem. No problem.
Okay, all you do is just go for the record.
Go for the record.
Seven, ten.
Seven, ten, Nick Menepace, Commissioner.
Sorry for my tardiness, Mr. Chair.
No problem.
And everyone else.
You said you might be late. Next up is Ex officio Don McKenzie from the Board of Selectors' Office.
Good evening, two, two larger items. At our Board of Selectment meeting last Wednesday, we concluded a public, concluded a public hearing in which the Board of Selectment approved a three-year moratorium on new sewer connections that effectively affect larger housing developments. Before the five to nothing vote Wednesday, First Lieutenant Cunningham said that the moratorium has been, until we know, true capacity. There are a lot of numbers. The town has also said the moratorium gives it time to explore and expand its own sewer capacity. One method is proposed is sewer treatment plant in New London increases capacity, and that would be a cost of fifty to seventy million dollars. But the first thing we should do is start with ground level as far as knowing what our capacity is. Both parties, for and against, brought forth compelling arguments. But as you can tell by the unanimous vote, at this time, the three-year moratorium is the safest and most effective route for our town right now. As of yesterday, eight AM, the Town of Eastlime has a new police chief, Kevin Glenn. The meeting was scheduled for eight AM as our new chief gave a short, very moving speech and simply wanted to get to work, which is greatly needed. I'm thrilled we are on the next, to the next chapter. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Plan Director Gary Geisell, do you have any updates?
Just on the Wall Hill Chase subdivision, this is the road across the hill, just at the end of Wall Hill Road with that intersection. Head east and you're right there. The binder course, as I mentioned, passes down off, the sister is in. I just noticed they've delivered two light poles, so those will be going in, so I suspect this road will be finished up relatively shortly. And I do have a feeling we'll try to file a course of asphalt down before we get turned over to the town for this one. That'll be coming forward, I suspect.
Thank you. Next up, subcommittees, see any updates? Chairperson, I don't really have any updates. Next up is the approval of the minutes, the meeting minutes of August 12th, 2025. Any discussion?
I did have one comment on there.
Okay.
On the third page, items that were completed, I just noticed, we said binding or finding, it should have been the binder course, I think, I remember. Were you used, um.
Do you have them all? I know, yeah, I know what you're talking about. I couldn't make out what you were saying, I'm.
I figured that was the.
The last course or whatever. I don't know if we got that.
Yeah, lagging courses down should just be the binder course.
Where am I?
Green, like, I need.
Second bullet.
Second bullet under Planning Director.
And that should be binder?
Binder.
Any other comments? All in favor of approving the minutes from August 12th?
Need a motion?
Need a motion? I mean, I mean, I'm sorry, need a motion, I'm sorry. Need a motion to approve the minutes for August 12th?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from August 12th?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other, and any abstentions? Okay, so the minutes were approved for August 12th. Next up, we, it's a public hearing. Kristen Clark, applicant English Harbor Capital Owner, Capital Partners. It's an application for a six lot conservation designed as strictly subdivision of six point five acres of land located at two thirty seven Upper Patagansett Road. Closing date for the, data recently was, was June 10th. So we have a public hearing starting today. Mr. Garrett, do you want to start?
I'll put a.
Oh, go ahead.
So just for the record, when you.
Sure.
One through. One through nineteen. Lot, if you agree to each exhibit item or provide the best for this. Provide the best. That being said, I do want to note that the video had was published in the August. In the August 1st, in August 8th edition of the dated paper. The thread is follows, Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on July 12th, twenty twenty five, seven AM. Eastlime Town Hall, the light bulb was erected in the paper. At Eastlime Town Hall, by Way of the Avenue, United Connecticut, according to the following, application Kristen Clark, D B, not to make the capital partners, R O P. Owner for six lot conservation design district. Resubdivision across the six point five acres of plan, then hiring a recording on property located at two thirty seven Upper Patagansett Road, Eastside, Connecticut, Southside, and the nine block, ten and dash two. At that, Jerry's here to present the application.
Good evening, members of the commission. As you may recall from the hearing, which commenced in, I believe it was August, that, at that time, all the design work was not the only thing we were waiting on was approvals of the septic designs from Ledge Light. Mr. May, who was here tonight, and I had a meeting with Ledge Light, not last week, but the week before, to go over the issues that they had raised in their inspection of the property and the test pits. Those issues were all addressed to the satisfaction of Ledge Light. I sent to Mr. Geisell, I believe it was Monday, a copy of the Ledge Light approvals for those lots. There was one issue that Ledge Light had with lot thirty-two dash two. They wanted a note on the, on the plan. That was prepared and done by Mr. May and transmitted to Mr. Geisell yesterday, I believe it was. And therefore, in the way Ledge Light had learned that, worded that was condition, approval conditioned upon the adding of this note to the plans. That, that was done, so we've met that condition, so all six lots now have the Ledge Light approval on that. And that, as I said, was the only essentially outstanding issue. The, I do want to address a couple of comments that were made by Ms. Whitaker with regard to the property itself. She had raised an issue as to whether or not the private road would go through to the existing Upper Kennington and Nottingham Hills subdivision. That, although you see the road here, that's the existing dirt road, that cannot happen because the land in between here is the Eastlime Land Trust land, subject to conservation easement in favor of the Department of Environmental Energy and Environmental Protection. So no access would be allowed through that portion of the property. As for the open space, in the design report, it give it F eighty-six point five, excuse me, eighty point six five of the hundred and seven acres that make, made up the original subdivision proposal are in open space. You may recall, if I look at the site map, that was one of the changes the commission asked for originally, the, where it said subject property was over here pointing to the open space. Moved that at your request to here to indicate that property. So when the Nottingham Hills subdivision was created, this piece was carved out at that point in time as part of that approval. This, so the, the open space itself represents seventy-five percent of the land area of the subdivision, whereas only thirty cent, thirty percent is required. It's also surrounded by open space on this side and, and over here, which is now owned by the Town of Eastlime. The access for the subdivision is from Upper Patagansett. And the sightlines meet and exceed the ASHTO standards which govern that. They're almost twice, the sightline distance is almost twice what ASHTO requires for a road of this type on there. It's the same in sightlines and access design that was approved as part of the original subdivision of the land back in two thousand and five on that. There was a lot line subdivision done up here for property that is by Mrs. Stevens, and she has provided access through this parcel here to, to her property. I think Mrs. Whittington also raised an issue of speed on Upper Patagansett Road. I don't know that it's an issue we're not on there, but issues such as speed are enforcement issues. The applicant or the homeowners have no ability to control that other than contacting Public Safety and asking Public Safety to use radar enforcement in, in that area. But, you know, again, even, even if speed is a factor on the road, the sightlines are over five hundred feet in both directions on there, which is exceeding the ASHTO standards. In addition, the width of Upper Patagansett also exceeds the ASHTO standards for a road of this type in this location. You know, unless the commission has any additional questions or comments, that's essentially it. The, the only other thing I would point out is that with regard to utilities, they're not shown on this map because Eversource policy is not to design the location of those until they know there's an approved subdivision. So if this gets approval, you can obviously condition, or we, or we can put a note on these lots since we don't actually plan to do the development of the lots, but indicating that Eversource, or a condition of approval is required that Eversource provide the utility easement and site plan for their utility easements. So they'll typically go out and, or not, I wouldn't say go out, but they'll look at the subdivision application once it's approved, then make a determination as to where any transformers need to go and how many go there, once they know the final boundaries of, of lots. And so you'll see here, with, with respect to the lots, once they know where these boundary lines are for certain, i.e. meaning that they've been approved, they'll then come in and make a determination as to whether a transformer goes here, here, or there. And everything has to be underground anyway under your regulations. So I don't know if you have questions for me or questions for Mr. May.
There were some issues on the Ledge Light Health District, there's additional plan issues, I don't know if, there was a couple of things, there was no mention of utilities and whether they will be overhead or underground.
They're gonna be, they have to be underground per your regulations.
Right.
Plus, Eversource won't, in this day and age, they won't do anything but underground utilities at this point.
That's also a standard bullet that they put on almost all their documents that.
Okay.
Just to let the personnel that, when you do put electric utilities underground, you have to have separation distance from the septic system.
All right.
Have non-draining backfill.
Okay.
And we have no problem putting a note like that on the final plans that could be submitted to Mr. Geisell for confirmation.
Okay. And there's one other condition, I guess, they mentioned. It's recommended that well arcs be kept in the property that they serve, and all well casings should be located at least ten.
Right, and we, we've done our best to do that, but that's, they have, they prefer that, but it, but it's not required under the state health code. It's a preferable thing.
Right.
One of the things, just so we all understand, again, you know, these are conceptual designs, so we do our best to show you, we, we can demonstrate that the well arcs on the properties are as far from the septic and far from the other wells as possible. But, so if you look here, there's a slight overlap here and a slight overlap there, that's the only two. But again, because these are conceptual, if a homeowner comes in and says, I don't want my house here, I want my house here, yes, come back to the town and to Ledge Light to try and get an approval to do something different than what's shown on, on this map. Because they need to make sure that there's separation distance between the budding property, separation distance between the well and the septic, and, and also obviously that the septic design is going to work.
All the, the well arcs are there for underground sanitary system separation. And also therefore, if they have a high, you know, leak for water, then it has to go to one hundred and fifty or whatever it is. But in this case, these are normal residential, only seventy-five feet. And they need to be twenty-five feet from a foundation and a certain distance from the property ladder, and we meet that. So asking for the well arcs is good, but there's a whole bunch of requirements too about the location of the well that has to meet the site plan. And every one of these lots has to come before this board again to be reviewed for site plan approval. So that's, that's, this one is just a lot feasibility to demonstrate that the lot meets the, the minimum requirement.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Where do people, they have to bring their trash all the way up to Patagansett Road?
Unless they have private contractor, yeah. The street I live on, everybody's private name. I, I live in East Adam, and I gotta tell you, we got some nasty hills there, and people bring it down to the bottom of the hill. But, you know, I, I understand that that's a bit of a schlep because it's not going to be plowed, they're gonna have to have their own contractor do the plowing and so forth. They may well, you know, I don't know if you have dump stickers in, in Eastlime, I've got one, I go to the dump, I like, you know, talk with normal people instead of lawyers. Transfer state, it, it goes through, let's not fool ourselves, it's going through a dump somewhere. But, yeah, so, I mean, and then essentially, that's a choice, almost like the design of the house, if, if they want to do that. And they can factor it in if they decide to buy the lot or not.
I would note, Alex Close, our town engineer, his demo to me on July twenty-second indicates that it's a private driveway, is proposed to serve the lots, and it will be the owner's responsibility to maintain the driveway, garbage and recycling pickup will only occur on Upper Patagansett Road, any method deemed acceptable by the Public Works Director and Superintendent.
And, and there is, in the design report, there's maintenance agreement for the driveway and easements as well and so forth. So they understand that as part of this, these people are going to be responsible for the road themselves, no one else.
How does that work? What do they?
They got a police themselves, they're, it's a private driveway.
So.
Private road.
Right.
So they're totally responsible for the plowing. If it fills up in two feet of snow, the only time we're gonna plow it, if there's an emergency situation and we gotta get an ambulance back there, we'll, we'll just send the truck out and we'll move the snow so that it won't get there. But beyond that, it's their responsibility.
Right, so, so the, the idea behind the maintenance agreement is, is so that if one person says, I ain't paying anything, the neighbors can say, you will, if you don't, if not, we'll take you to court. In fact, the, the state passed a statute of probably longer than I think, about ten years ago, that dealt with this issue because there's earlier subdivisions didn't have necessarily maintenance agreements. They just said you have a shared road or whatever, and then the issue for the courts was, well, what are the responsibilities of all these people? And so the state passed a statute that essentially says a minimum, if there is no written agreement as to the maintenance and cost sharing on the road, this statute controls. But in this particular case, and as everybody has, as the years have passed, they've learned, you gotta have a maintenance agreement in here because if I'm coming in to buy, I want to know what my obligations are, I want to avoid going to court. And, and therefore, everybody is bound by this, and they understand that when they're coming into the process.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Anybody else wish to speak? Just. Say your name and, and address.
Thanks. I'm Patricia Whitaker, I've lived on Upper Patagansett for forty years, taught in town for forty-five years.
Just name your address, I guess.
Oh, one ninety Upper Patagansett. I spoke last week, but, well, last time, I mean, last meeting, but I, I wanted to say, I called Gary twice, I asked you to give me a call back to, so I knew how to address the committee or write a letter, and I didn't hear back from you. Okay. So I want to speak to the development on Upper Pat that's happened in the last forty years and how it's become a little bit dangerous if you want to walk on that road or ride a bike. There are no sidewalks, no shoulders. The high school team, track team, used to run on it. I haven't seen them lately, but they jog on that road and go around Scott. People do jog on the road, people do ride bikes. I saw a biker almost get hit the other day because he's in a recumbent bike and a car came up, didn't see him, swerved over, there was another car coming, and luckily, nobody got hurt. But I worry. One time, two bikers were biking and the car couldn't go around him, and he had to go into the other lane, but he ended up stopping because he couldn't get in the other lane because there was a car coming the other direction. There's nowhere to go if you're not on that road, there's no shoulders. Was a traffic study done on this, on, on the road? A lot of houses have gone up in the forty years, I was just wondering if a traffic study was done. No?
Not aware of any.
No, there's no traffic study that's been done on Upper Pat in relation to this application, maybe others in the past, I don't know. In terms of the general circulation on Upper Pat, just a proper study by the town.
Should there be a study before you put more houses up there?
That's a separate question. I would say the level of service on Upper Pat right now is probably, I'm, yes, maybe a C at best. I, I, you know.
Does that mean?
That means that, that there's probably a thousand to two thousand vehicle trips a day. Yeah, in comparison to a twenty lot subdivision, which is a low volume road, so twenty lots.
There's thirty up in Kensington.
Right, so just, and in contextually, right, the twenty lots of the, for our regulations, is considered low volume.
Twenty.
I don't know how many lots are on, on Upper Pat, but it's a collector road, it's a through road, so it's designed to carry traffic heavier.
But not trucks. There's no, through, through trucks are not supposed to go through there.
There's no sign.
It used to be that way, yeah.
There's no sign on the road, so the truck cannot traverse Upper Pat. So until the town, and maybe the, the new chief, to address that traffic issue, the chief of police is the traffic authority in the Town of Eastlime. So they're gonna have to tackle that, whether or not the signage is correct. As far as whether or not we do a study, that's something that the Planning Commission can entertain, something you want to do or if you're interested in, we can maybe look for rent money to undertake that. Because there is maybe a cost to hiring, you know, can we do it in-house, I can talk to Alex or our town engineer, maybe that's something to do. My opinion though, based on the land area around Upper Pat, not the vacant area, unless all of that land is somehow developed in the future, would be then, I think, more a traffic study on Upper Pat. A lot of that's owned by Yale already, there's a large track owned by the Girl Scout camp, the Woods and Brook, now is the Patagansett Park Center. Is that subject to development possibly in the future? I, I don't, I can't speak to Yale, whether or not they'll sell their property or not, but they haven't in the last, say, hundred years since they've owned it, so I suspect that they won't take what they can, they will make. As well as, and the state owns that land in that direction as well, you know, the state force, so that's more on this town road. There's a corridor in there, I don't know that current level of traffic, without doing a traffic count, the, the.
Nobody's, nobody's looking, but I drive it every day, so I know.
So like I said, I think that's something that the Traffic Authority in Town of Eastlime can pursue, and we have the Planning Commission, but we have no recommendation to take for the traffic study. I don't know what that'll necessarily solve for us, other than define maybe some efficiencies, areas where the road's too narrow and need to be widened. The question will be, would be on the right away in those areas, I think there's a former subdivision application, it was discovered the town didn't even own the right away, yet we may have restricted rights to pass, re-pass, and maintain. But, you know, with issues like that, it certainly creates some more questions.
And money to widen in, I mean, it hasn't been widened ever, so I'm not optimistic that it would be. But just a little story, when the Kensington thing went on, the road didn't get paved, it took a long time. Rumor had it that bills were not paid and all that dirt washed into the lake. So then I'm a homeowner and I pay out of pocket to clean up the lake. So that's why I'm like, you know, enough. So, um, this thing, you're talking, this new one won't be by the lake, but that's what happened when Kensington went in. And Kensington is still building, and there's at least thirty, I think there's twenty-five to thirty houses up there, that all come down and go on Upper Pat. Or go to, they go either way or to Scott, but that's a lot of houses. Then that whole thing of Hathaway's got built, that's probably four, ten, and then there's a bunch of on the other side, so it's, there's been a lot of houses. And I know there's a lot of traffic, and I work out in my yard, I hear the cars go by, I see them. Some people drive the speed limit, most don't. So I'm asking the committee, you know, if there's any reason to stop it, maybe, I hope you could find that. So no more houses are going up on there until you're sure that the road can take it and it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So if all the kids would walk down the Patagansett Road and pick up the bus down there, is that? Is that what the, what would have to happen? That's the bus route, right?
Yeah, they would have to get picked up at the, at the intersection of the driveway and.
So I noticed in the application that there's some endangered species impact and, and there's no tree removal allowed between April fifteenth and nine thirty. How do we ensure that's enforced?
As a condition of the approval, I would be your agent group to make sure that that happened. If it didn't, then I suspect my home would break, and I would then contact the applicant developer or build a, you know, combined with.
Just to ask on that one, Mr. Chair, what is the current fine if they were to say, do that, to cut the tree, though, is it, there's no cutting for, between, you said, April and, and September? So what, what is the penalty?
Financial penalty?
Yeah.
I don't believe we have a fine, if in the weapon agency has a ordinance that was adopted that they can issue.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I meant through, I suppose.
We would simply take them to court and they will stop and.
Okay.
Junction and they'll stop and if they fail to find with that, and then you.
Mm-hmm.
Court goes there and.
Yeah. Okay. I, I was also, Mr. Chair, forgive me, because I was not here for last week for this one, but the, or not last week, last month for it, but, I mean, I, I also share the concern about the lack of sidewalk infrastructure as well, but this is a private road, so I don't really know if, even if we wanted to, there's really any ability for the town to enforce something like that, considering this is not going to be a town-operated road, correct? Yeah, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns?
That was pretty much it for me, that's my biggest concern, but I don't think there's really anything the town can do about that.
Right. Anything else? Any?
Just, just quickly, I mean, in terms of the sidewalk, you aren't talking about private road, so, and it would probably be unlikely that people would want sidewalks coming through there because they're gonna have to have, you know, everyone going through the front doors. But again, as a private road, the only traffic going through is going through the properties. And Gary's right, the kids are gonna have to walk down to this area here to get picked up by the bus. But again, this isn't going to generate any significant increase in traffic on this. And otherwise, I shouldn't say otherwise, because that makes it sound like there's something missing, it meets all the subdivision regulations that the town has that are applicable to CDB developments. And in terms of the, the DEP. has that are applicable to CDB developments. And in terms of the DEP's position on the, you know, when, when cutting and so forth can be done, we run into that on all, or all sorts of properties. At least I do in terms of doing this and so forth, and the developers know. Can't do certain things during certain times of the year. C- desist order can be issued if they do that, and it can be taken to court if need be. But, you know, typically, my experiences, developers will follow those rules because they don't want to be bogged down with things like that. And, you know, this isn't such a large subdivision that you couldn't manage the development of these properties outside that timeframe. Because, because again, one of the, one of the key things that might run into an issue is if there are a lot of public improvements. This road, portion of it is already there and correct, the bed, the bed to the road is there, so there's not going to be a lot of digging. They may have to resurface some of it and so forth to that town, but that's it. So there's very little disturbance in the road area, and, you know, the lots can be managed in terms of that. Because the other issue, too, is somebody has to come in and get a permit to start doing any of that. And the permit can have no start before, or no, no activity on the property of the following nature between the following dates.
Okay, thank you. Gary, were there any, we have, we got the ledge light comments. Was there anything else that we were waiting on? I don't think we.
I don't believe there were any other comments that we had. Comments from zoning, town in here, fire marshal, that looked like, I think, aside from just myself reviewing, you know, this material and coming up with things like conditions of when to do work, I did not really know how the condition.
Right.
Finished a public hearing and any information that was asked, then asked for corrections as well. So I think we've got everything. I've got one other question for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ENS plan, that's, these are regulations.
Right.
That.
Yeah, I know there's concerns with the traffic and walking, I guess.
Because it's under twenty lots, you would require a regulation.
Right. Yeah, it's not really been commonplace to request a common, you know, traffic study for that level, you know. It's obviously a concern and understandable. Does anybody else have any? Okay, thank you. So I think we can, motion to, to close the public hearing?
Yeah, motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. So, yeah, I guess we have time to make a decision on this, sixty-five days, like whatever. So I guess for the next meeting, we can write up something.
Yeah, all around the, the resolution, including the time to question, as you mentioned.
Right.
Any conditions, probably include ENS bond, the challenge.
Right.
I'll just calculate that with Alex. Typically, you have the aggregate for estimate, but we don't have to do, so.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next up on the agenda is forty-nine, two-lot, application for a two-lot subdivision at forty-nine Brainerd Road, approximately fifty-two point seventy-nine acres of land located at forty-nine Brainerd Road. Date of receipt was August fifth. Good evening. I didn't think your name and.
John Paul Marine, Gork Marine, land surveyors and land planners, one ninety-one Boston Post Road, right here on Eastline.
Thank you.
I'd like to apologize for not being here last month. I was out of state when the application came in, and I appreciate the opportunity to have a table to come back this evening. So.
It stated that we had fifty-two acres, I believe it was. It actually is, shit, thank you, is forty-nine point three plus or minus. This property is at the end of Brainerd Road. Dead End Road is a, is a state parking area here with state land on the other side. The proposal is to set one point six acres lot out here right at the beginning of the property itself. The reason there's a discrepancy between the acreage was there was a lot line adjustment previously where a portion of land was added to an upper's property. So originally, when the application came in, this, this portion of the plan was on a fifty scale, and was requested to be reduced to a forty scale, which we got in, I think, prior to the last meeting. So here we are with the forty scale. Brainerd Road comes down here, state property's over here. There's an existing easement to a tower, a cell tower on the property here, and the remainder of the road goes down to the, what's going to be the remaining property and the existing house. It's proposed to put one home in here. There is shaded X zone flood area here with wetlands around here. The plan has been approved by the Wetlands Commission last week, and I'm looking at the planner's memo here, and while I'm quite comfortable with my feminine side, my middle name is Paul, not Paula. I'm all right with this, you know. And again, it also had the, the area being the fifty, fifty-two acres, I believe it was, and again, that is forty, forty-nine. We do have letters, we did send a letter to the state archaeologists requesting a review, and that was sent out, I believe, on the twenty-eighth of last month. I have not heard anything back from her as of yet. The application went to ledge light at the same time. We did a application to Wetlands and Plaine at the same time. That went off the ledge light, and I have not heard back from her as of yet. The test hole and test pit, the perk test information is on the plan. It indicates that the lot is suitable, and I know you need a report from ledge light. And again, this is conceptual to say that yes, that the site could sustain well excepted. We believe that it can. Pretty much in a nutshell.
I know they were, you mentioned that they were, I'm sorry, I'm not requesting a waiver on any issue, I guess. There was an issue, I think, you mentioned, possibility of a waiver.
Yeah, we were thinking initially, maybe we could waiver for stormwater regulations. But now we're talking to Alex, we're able to demonstrate. And based on Alex's comment, he said that Eric, basically, the rain guard should be sufficient capture. So with that, I think they proposed that drainage structure.
And Tim also did some revised calculations for us on that, if you're sure that we're in there.
Right.
So I believe Alex's last memo, basically, maybe they need those calculations. Disasterly flooding and anything like that. So I think from the stormwater perspective, it's adequate, there are provisions there. We got Alex's quote on that as well.
Hmm.
Issue.
Okay.
Other than getting correspondence from ledge light and then, and the archaeological survey results, and a letter from the state archaeologist indicating that some further investigations necessary to be waived. So being that we have only sixty-five days to render a decision on this, it does not require a public hearing, and we're kind of at the end of that timeline. We need to have to act on this tonight, or request an extension, applicants to grant that extension.
Okay.
Either way, if you had to act, you do have a resolution in front of you. I did recommend a two thousand dollar ENS bond to the lot, so. Anyhow, that was my recommendation to ultimately condition the archaeological survey be conducted prior to. Really, the only two conditions that I had. So then, I think as you heard, Mr. Marine said that ledge light, the test holes are suitable based on their engineering and the calculations.
What was your first recommendation again? I'm sorry.
It was a two thousand dollar erosion settlement.
Okay.
Pursuant to section five A, the archaeological survey, the archaeological survey be conducted by a professional archaeologist, and your state archaeologist, who had documentation on that department.
And as pointed out earlier in the other application, the test holes here are to prove suitability. Can, can it work? Yes, it can. Now, having said that, it's still, even if we had a letter from ledge light tonight, it's still gonna have to be approved by ledge light before you get a building permit.
Anybody else have any questions? Would you be amenable to, if you have to act on it tonight, but you can request an extension, would you be amenable to request an extension to get all the, the leg, information from ledge light?
I'm sure the applicant would be willing to that. I'm here as his agent, and he pretty much told me to, we need to make this happen. If it's gonna be a more comfortable house for you folks, certainly we'd comply with that.
Okay.
That sounds like a yes to me. So I would say we need to, there are five A extensions in the next week.
Okay.
So if they're amenable to that, then I would, I would. At least it's on the record here. Here, I've got.
Chairman, beautiful members and staff. Thank you so very much for your help and your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. No further action we need to do with that again. No further action.
Next up, I guess, the, Eric, the subdivision application for Catbird Lane, we moved up to the RG, it's GC, it's an application.
So I think tonight, we're basically just calling DC and scheduled a public hearing.
Okay.
Talk about it, Mr. Marine. Thank you very much.
That's next.
Thank you. So you may want to stay October, or October? No, October.
For the public hearing, or?
Nope, the next item on the agenda.
Oh.
Because I, I put the lot line back on.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to take, actually, I wanted to take mine.
Yeah.
We can withdraw. That's up to you. I was gonna have to act on it.
Yeah.
Or are you gonna withdraw? Have they already made some decision?
Well, they, they said the decision was that they needed a, a subdivision, so.
Yeah, so.
I thought you needed to deny it, or?
Yeah, so, so in terms of that, we'll just withdraw that lot line revision application. I'll get a letter out tomorrow.
I thought we had decided last meeting that they require a subdivision application.
Correct.
But we took no action.
We took no action on the lot, okay.
It was an application in and of itself, rather than having it.
We took no specific action on the lot line.
Standing out there with, with no approval, but not.
Right. If there, if it's withdrawn, there's no appeals, no nothing, which we're all be happy with, so.
Okay.
We'll have a solid.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have zoning referral, an application by the Eastline Zoning Commission for a proposed text amendment to the Eastline zoning regulations by modifying section one by adding the definition of short-term rentals. And it looks like they have a public hearing scheduled for October second, so take whatever action at this meeting.
So we're holding a public hearing on October second. We decided, basically, it's adding a definition, a definition of short-term rental. We don't meet before, so.
No, we meet after that.
After the meeting, so it would be good idea to remember decisions tonight. Simply adding a definition to the regulations, the short-term rental. It is, certainly is helpful, not inconsistent with the.
Yeah. I'm honestly just surprised it took us this long to get this definition, because it's pretty, you know, just.
It's a coastal town. I mean, I've been looking through the POCD all meeting, and I don't see anything specifically against the wordage there, so.
Yeah, specifically addressed short-term rentals, but I guess there's, I don't see, I didn't see anything in conflict with it either.
Having a definition is, is a huge help.
Mm-hmm. So, anybody else have any comments?
Is, is this like a find consistent or inconsistent kind of situation?
Yeah, basically.
So basically, the, the short-term rental definition that this sort of public application is that it's basically putting it off at thirty days, it's consecutive thirty days day, it's early. So it said the rent, rental of a person with a complete roof with mullio residence, or similar combination for B, for up to thirty consecutive calendar days, and for which there's an obligation to pay estate or occupancy tax pursuant to general statutes of, as such, twelve dash four inch, as the statute may amend. Short-term rentals is not including hotels, B's, and bed and breakfast for the hotel uses.
And I'm sure that will be redefined again many times in years to come.
Mm-hmm. Right, yes. Yeah, I mean, they can address, we can address that, I guess, next time we have the affordable housing subcommittee. I think they had, they had a short-term rental committee having meetings. I guess they requested zoning.
Yeah, I think before two months, we'll be tackling it, and so we're, it's updated before the housing plan, for our PMSU, so twenty twenty-five, and last updated in twenty twenty, so we're five more years, and we still gotta get updated the other plan.
Right.
We have a good word to.
And we're gonna have two, two documents coming up pretty close together.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Chair, do we need to make a motion to?
Now, Mr. Chair, do we need to make a motion to find this consistent?
Right, basically, we have the, the, the discussion, we get a motion whether it's consistent with the P O C D or inconsistent.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we find this zoning text amendment be consistent with the East Line P O C D.
Second. Thank you, second. Any other discussion? All in favor of stating that this text amendment is consistent with the P O C D?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Nope. Thank you. Basically municipal referrals, I don't think we had any. Remember the old business subdivision regulations, section four, application submission procedure?
I still work in that dragon, I feel a bit, but hopefully we can, kind of off the agenda, so we can forward. We'll look for the commission's edification that Wallace and Palmer was merged with a Modi.
Harmony.
Modi.
It's Lawrence.
Lawrence, Sandak.
No relation.
So anyway, there's some, we managed, Tim Griesdale and Tracy Collins were two attorneys that stayed on for more than, I, I, right now, so. I, I don't think there'll be much change. I think it'll be assigned. Please tell.
Okay.
With that, I'll just report, hopefully in the next week we'll have insurance, so we have a, a lifetime to.
Okay, good, good. Next up, we had the lot line revision that, Mr. Gary said they're withdrawing the requests. So I think that, we have a new business, so I guess I can take a motion, have the motion to adjourn or?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Mr. Chair, to be free.
I'm sorry.
Maybe I missed something when I was, when I was there, but was the Cedar Brook re-subdivision accepted?
Yeah, they called it Catbird.
Catbird.
Catbird Lane.
So be accepted then, then I'd see.
Okay, I thought, I thought so, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
We set the application to have a, to have a public hearing scheduled.
Maybe that should have got put on the business, but.
Okay, yeah, that's, I, I, yeah, we're not allowed to work, but that's fine.
That's what they're on the, like, I told you, put it under.
Okay, no problem, I just want to make sure.
Okay. We're good, okay. So we had a second, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed?
Is anyone ever opposed to adjournment?